Yeah. Rising and new pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now call this regular board meeting of independent school district 544 to order. And our first item of business is to establish our forum. Kirby Anderson, Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Mrs. Hermes, present. Steven Vigasa.
Here.
Natalie Knutson. We have a forum. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, very well, we are on to a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to the Home Depot of Fergus Falls for their generous contribution of cleaning supplies to the Kennedy Secondary School. Also, congratulations to the following students that placed at the state track meet. Alexander Jensen, a 10th grader, third in the boys' shot put. Ainsley Hanson, 11th grade, fourth in the girls' high jump. And Sevea Smithed, grade 12, fifth in the girls' shot put. Good job. I will offer this resolution and move for its adoption. Is there someone who would provide a second? Second. Thank you, Missy, and any discussion on the resolution? Quick, will you please take role?
Yes, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Very well, thank you. We have a report this morning from Derek Abraham's in regard to our activities. Derek, if you don't mind, even minus the podium, just come in this corner.
Yep.
That's just more beneficial for
Absolutely.
Some of the technology pieces. One of Natalie. Just rolling in late.
Oh, yeah, I just got done with class, so.
Oh, yeah, good, okay. That might be your word. All right, thanks, Derek.
All right, well, we had, what I would say, a very successful spring. I know I changed the title during the top of winter, but spring activities, very successful springs. But it's always a tough one for us where typically the way the classes work out historically, pretty small school for our classes. But when you first look at our participation numbers, I know four or five years ago, we were concerned about all of the activities that we offer. We're not concerned about that, we're very proud of that. But at the same time, our size of school versus that of the Brainerd's and the other CLC schools that offer the same number of activities is to make sure that we still fill them all. And as the trend has been going since fall and winter of this year, even post-COVID here, our numbers have maintained or grown, which with the smaller classes that have come through just mean that it's a higher percentage of kids that are continuing being in all activities. Obviously, the focus here, this report is athletics, but we have seen the same thing in our music programs, our participation in theater, everything like that. So the kids are still very, very active. We have more clubs and different opportunities than we ever have. So I take that as a very, very good sign that our kids are involved. You can see the numbers there. Again, three of them, boys' golf, girls' golf, boys' tennis, all include 7th and 8th graders with that number, but that's consistent with what it has going back to 2017, as you see there. So our numbers are maintaining, and with our bigger classes now coming through, we're hoping that same percentage happens. I visited every single 6th grade classroom again this spring to explain the opportunities that they'll have as 7th graders, and got a good response there. As far as results, you can see those two, several CLC performers of the week. Also, a high number of all-conference and honorable mention. Just to leave them off here real quick, I won't do all of them, but the all-conference, Anna DeJerkis, Leah Soidara in girls' golf, Carter Tilpe, Ian Snumble, Eric Hecox in baseball, Ryland Cryin', Tori Rats, and Lacey Strong in softball. And then Alex Jensen, Jordan Lee, Spia Smithed, and Ainsley Hanson roll conference and track. And again, it's a tough, we have a tough, tough conference when you look through this. I think we had three baseball teams that made state tournament out of the CLC. Two softball teams, obviously, track was loaded with CLC schools. State qualifiers, great spring, successful spring, not just in qualifying for state, but what we did there. A week ago, we were down, a little over, we go at the girls' golf state tournament. First time ever in that program's history they ever qualified for a state tournament, and they finished third in the state for AA, which is the middle class. There's three classes in golf. It was a lot of fun to walk along with them down there. They played very, very well, and like I said, finished third place. Very impressive performance. And then for track, as mentioned earlier, Spia Smithed, Alex Jensen, Ainsley Hanson, all placed. So that was, again, the way they had it this year at St. Michael Elverville, high jump and shot put were right next to each other. So there was a lot of, I got to watch both as they went along there. And just to see us place, I mean, not just top 16, not just qualifying, but we were in the running in all of them. And it was so much fun to see these athletes go. And we should keep in mind too, we are officially the smallest school in AA. That will change next year when we go to three classes. But right now, there's just still two classes in track, and the cutoff number was us. So we are the smallest school down there. So they're performing with the big schools down there to finish. Spia finished fifth. Alex finished third in shot put. I should say, Spia was shot put as well. And then Ainsley Hanson finished fourth in high jump. And again, with all those performers at the state tournament, we have one senior on the golf team, Thea Eklund, who performed very well for us down there. But the rest were a couple juniors, freshmen and freshmen. And then for our state qualifiers for track, Alex Jensen's a sophomore and Ainsley Hanson's a junior. Any questions on anything directly on that report? And then I'm just, I have a couple highlights of what's coming up here, just to let people know. All right, a couple things coming up that we're real excited about here. Obviously, we're excited about having a little different year, I think, this year. Last year was a challenge, but very proud of the way everybody handled it. We have a new initiative that we're doing out of our office to tie in with our Outer Leadership Academy. Amber Hublin now will be leading that, it's called PAY, philanthropy through youth and youth. And we're going to have an opportunity to get some kids together and do some philanthropy throughout the community where they set their mission, their values, things like that, and steward a grant, and they're going to have $5,000 to give out to nonprofits in the area. It's going to be kind of a year-long process that they're going to go through and learn what it's like to get involved socially. Fits real nice with our portrait of graduate, some of the things that we talked about there. And so we're real excited to get that kicked off. And before you know it, we're going to be looking at fall sports. August, if anyone asks questions by the registration, they can contact me. Obviously, email, be in and out of the office all summer, they can contact me email. But Amber and I should be back by August 2nd at the very latest, back full-time in the office. August 9th is our open house. I'd like to say second annual, but we didn't have it last year because of COVID. But we will be having an open house where we kind of put on display all these activities that we have, all the different athletics, music, art, different opportunities. Working with Lake Region Hospital, they're going to do a physical blitz for us this summer, where it's going to be opened up for kids to go. I don't have the exact dates yet, but parents could just drop their kids off to basically get kind of a walkthrough physicals. Last year, we had an exemption to it. Because of COVID, they couldn't get in. So there's going to be a lot of kids that need physicals this summer before we start practice. So working with Lake Region Hospital, in fact, I have a meeting there this afternoon, and we're going to talk about some of those things. But a few other things, so just mark that down, 5 to 7, Monday night, August 9th. And then Monday, August 16th, we start our fall practices. So we'll be going here in about five, between four and six weeks since we'll really start heating up. We finally have our football schedule, which a lot of people may not care about the football games themselves, but that does dictate when homecoming is, and we've had a lot of questions about homecoming. And that is October 8th and 9th. We finally just got the schedule in, and obviously, we have to wait for homecoming until that because we do need a home football game for homecoming. So we'll have to wait till we got that schedule. And then our pride night, we said was, I think it was the 24th of September. Yep, because we had a couple away games in there. Early September, so it'll be a little bit later this year because it's the first available home game once school starts. You don't want this room? Good?
All right, thank you. And a report then from Superintendent Drake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a few updates on what's going on with the facilities. Herzog Roofing is done with their projects at KSS and Roosevelt. And Buckweilers is working this week on their project, roofing project over the Maroon Gym. The tennis courts are complete. That looks really nice up there, if anyone has traveled out that way. Tuck pointing is set to begin at Roosevelt here in the very near future. We do have an agreement with the contract for the ALC bathroom expansion, so that will be taking place. And then we'll have some painting going on in some of the ALC classrooms as well. Preschool enrollment, it looks like we're going to be successful adding another staff member out there. So once that's accounted for, that's going to fill a bunch of folks that were on a waiting list for the full-day, all-day program, so that's very positive. We will have, once that's done, nine spots still available in the 4-5 age group, with more applications expected to come in over the summer still. And we currently have 14 spots left in our 3-year-olds. So again, being not quite into July even, this is really looking very positive for our enrollment in outer preschool. Our CNA program, we received some positive news here. We had been working with M-State for a couple months in efforts to try to get the college credit restored to that program, and that's going to happen. So that's really good news. That's been a very popular program, and especially it has some really nice ties to our local businesses, and so we're very excited that that's going to happen. And then I'll walk through, I've been on the road out of state for a couple days, so the legislative session has wrapped up, and I'll just give some very brief overview of what happened with that. Financially, the numbers they're reporting on the formula is 2.45% for fiscal year 2022, that's the general ed formula, and 2% for fiscal year 2023. In actuality, the numbers vary somewhat from district to district when you get your final runs done. But all things considered, we will take this as a positive, because 12 months ago, we were thinking it could easily be zero and zero and possibly a freeze on getting your aid at times. So that's very, very good news. Article number two, education excellence. This has to do with the expansion of advanced placement in international baccalaureate programs. Article three has to do with teacher mentorship and using staff development dollars. Schools will be required to have teacher mentorship programs. We have had one in place now for several years and have already made plans to continue that this fall. Article four was about charter schools, which doesn't apply to us. Article five was on special education, and essentially, a provision in there to modify a student's IEP to make up for any lost education, et cetera, learning that happened due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Article six on health and safeties related to suicide prevention and self-harm, and requires districts or charter schools to have a seizure action plan. Article seven was on facilities, and we are now required to notify staff, students, and parents when the district receives notice of environmental hazards from the Department of Health or the Pollution Control Agency. Article eight is on nutrition, and essentially has language introduced now that prohibits districts from the practice of lunch shaming. And then article nine is on early education, and this has to do with financial allotment for voluntary pre-K and school readiness. Those slots basically are all being taken up by districts with much higher free and reduced lunch than the Fergus Falls district and our surrounding districts. Then article 10 was basically a general statement on the funding of community ed programs. So there are certainly finer details embedded in the legislative session, but that's just a very quick 30,000-foot overview of it. With that, we still have some staffing that we're working through, but we're really in quite good shape, all things considered, with our staffing. We will have welcome three new administrators to the district here in the coming days. Administratively, we do have more on the academic side retreat planned for July 14th, where we will be looking at how we're going to implement several of the facets of the strategic plan. So looking forward to getting to know the new administrative team and working together and forwarding the vision for Fergus Falls public school education. So with that, that's the completion of my report, unless there are any questions?
Just a question on the special education part of it for the pandemic. So I take it this is going to be a coding thing for the state? If they're going to be giving us resources back if they, for staff to be able to say that this was because of the COVID, that they actually didn't get the deans that they normally would have got? And so somehow, this is going to be some kind of coding for that, for us to get reimbursed on that one? Is that how I'm anticipating that?
We'll see how that shakes out. Coding on the special ed side has always been somewhat challenging. There is still some continuation of the special ed cross-subsidy, as I understand it. So that does help offset, and I guess for the listeners, in special education, the amount of funding that school districts receive to educate students often fall short of the cost to provide services under an individualized education plan. And so that's what we call the cross-subsidy, is the general ed subsidizing the additional cost for special ed plans. And so this would be a further piece of that as you add on potential learning loss or other factors due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the question of either state or federal government stepping up to provide additional funding to pay for those services, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our general consent item was for consideration. The items we potentially would approve include the minutes from my June 14th board meeting, and then a variety of personnel.
All right, under personnel, we have a few hires and a resignation from Rebecca Hanson, parent educator at ALC. Basically, she's leaving that position in order to be hired for the high school secretary position. And it states Rebecca Hanson is because that's her, obviously, her full name, but most people know her as Becca Hanson. So she will just switch kind of from a parent educator at ALC to a high school office secretary here at KSS this fall. Certified staff hires, we have Mary Stish. She will become a 2nd grade teacher over at Adams. And then Jennifer Jensen, a science teacher at Kennedy Secondary School. And if you remember, our last board meeting, we hired her as our student services coordinator. She will still do that component to her job, but this is part-time. She'll be teaching two classes, first semester and one class this second semester. So that's why it says 1.25 FTE. So there'll be a combination job under her title there. So I would recommend these items for approval for our board.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent item?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And that is approved, so we'll move on to new business, which is an initiative very popular with this board to increase meal rates. But this is for the adults, so it's duly noted that the government's still going to cover lunches for the next year for students. But this motion then is to set the fiscal year 22 regular meal rates for adults to $4 for lunch and $1.95 for breakfast. And that's according to the Department of Ed and USDA guidelines, so would someone make that motion?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Do you know what the number is, Blake, off the top of my head, we've got to get to against that, what are your prices?
Well, technically, we don't have a number yet. Well, until the government comes out with the new pay equity model, which they will not be coming out with this, for last year, but student and adult lunches are done a little differently. So referring to adult lunches is a little bit different from referring to student lunches, if that makes sense. Because right now, it's like $3.09 for students, and they're not going to come out with anything new, I don't think, this year. But I'm going to make sure our adults are treated much differently, but in comparison, we're probably 10 to 20 cents lower than our peers when it comes to adult lunches, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions, discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, moving on, we had in our packet a proposed lease for the Fergus Falls Area Special Education Cooperative for the upcoming school year, is there a motion to approve that? So moved. All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? Blake, it includes about a 2% increase?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, inflation rate of 2%.
All right.
It's been pretty consistent over the years, and whether the inflation has increased, depending on the year, we've just kept it steady because eventually, the goal is to have a balance.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're in approval there. Looking for a motion to accept the milk product provider bids. Cast Clay Creamery was the winning bid, so a motion to accept them as the service provider. Would someone offer that?
So moved.
Good job, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, very good. We have a resolution for consideration for adopting ISD 544 fiscal year 23 long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan. So whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota statutes subdivision 4 states that a school district or intermediate district must annually adopt and approve a 10-year facilities plan by July 31st for commissioner approval. And whereas a school district develop a 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with the law, a lot of words to say, we have a plan. Would someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer a resolution.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Blake, did it need a little more beef to the statute part? Just the subdivision 4? Oh, this is directly from?
From MDE's basic guidance.
Prototypes.
Prototypes of one of their templates that they wanted us to use.
Yeah, okay.
This is something we haven't done in the past.
Yeah.
So I'm just kind of taking it out of their book.
Okay.
And making sure we're following the most updated.
Because generally speaking, we just have a motion to approve it. We don't have a resolution.
Yeah.
So we're kind of getting, we're kind of getting a little fancy now.
All right, very well. Good, because I want to say everybody's name. If you could just pick up with that, please, Missy. All right, Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a commercial apology policy package through EMC Insurance for a total cost of $138,787.25 annually. Looking for approval. We'll entertain the motion and then just have Blake do a quick recap on it. Would someone make that motion?
So I'm, go ahead and see.
I'll take that motion.
All right. One second from you then, Matt?
Sure.
And just the highlights on that then, Blake?
All right, so everything will be covered under this package, is property, general liability, some linebackers included in there, cyber crime, inland marine auto, and then we have an additional umbrella package. This went really well. I'm thinking we're going to be saving between 30,000 and 40,000 on this policy compared to what we were going to pay. So, and I believe we are set really well from being a district being well insured, and going forward, we will be pretty well-maintained in that area. So I was really happy with the process. Eric Johnson was great to work with. But there may be changes in the future, but who knows? But I believe, I believe we're well insured.
Great. All right, so we have a motion, second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Looking for a motion for a lease agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and our school district for softball field number five and parking facility for the purpose of conducting regular seasoned softball activities. And this will be for a 10-year period, starting on May 1st of this year.
Melanie.
We can go back one.
You must be.
Number 6. Thank you, thank you. Let's back that up. Looking for a motion to accept a bid for 2021 school year Dakota First indemnifying workers' comp insurance quote for a total of $56,584 annually. Will someone move for that acceptance?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, and Blake, can you give us a quick overview there?
So we saw a slight uptick in our workers' comp insurance premium due to two factors. Our discount rate wasn't as, wasn't as good as the year before due to some claims that came through, so that'll adversely affect the total premium. And it also is attached to the total amount of salaries that are being paid as well. So when you see an uptick, a decrease in your discount, and then an uptick in your salary, it just amounted in just a natural increase. And if we see the claims come back down over time, then we will see the benefit of the discount again, more so, even though we are still receiving about a 13% discount. But we believe we got the best premium price.
All right, thank you. Any questions or discussion on that?
All I'll say is that it's far better than what it used to be.
Oh, yes.
It should be a lot, lot more.
Yeah, like, how many times more?
Yeah, I know. This is good.
Or, five, or?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, and now we'll move on to the lease agreement for the softball field for 10-year period, would someone offer that motion?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, questions on the lease that was in our packet? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. Oh, hey, we have the SR3 Safe Return to School in-person learning plan. Can we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second that, great.
And we'll talk about this in the, will we be talking about this in the work session, Superintendent?
We certainly can, and then I do need to do the summary piece as well from the
Feedback.
Feedback, yes.
That's kind of what I was.
Yeah, would you let me to do that at this point?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay. So we did send out a a survey, and the SR3 Safe Return to School Plan was required because of the federal SR3 dollars. And we basically patterned our plan off some work that was done off some some work that was done off some metro area schools. We're basically all doing the same thing. It's personal protective equipment is required, it's sanitizing, it's your protocols, transportation, masks, et cetera. And so the plan, plan was put together, modified for our own particular district and the way we've done things and the communications we've had with city, county, and state officials. That plan was put out for public review last week, and then our community had an opportunity to reflect on it and respond via a very simple survey, whether they approved of the plan or not. So the results of the survey are 106 respondents, eighty, just under 87% of them were in favor of the plan that was put forward. Of the 9.4% that disagreed with the plan, this will come as no surprise of the, so we're only talking about, you know, 10 people or so. But it was kind of split 50-50 over the masks piece. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding. This Safe Return to Work does not require masks to be worn. It does recommend that masks be worn for those that have not been vaccinated, but it's not required. Some people thought that it was required. So that was a little controversial. And then there were those folks too, that felt that if a person had not been vaccinated, masks shouldn't be optional, but should be required. So other than that, the other couple of comments had to do with district sanitizing protocols for surfaces. And then the other comment that I recall was a request for the district to consider offering distance learning as an option. But all told, considering the controversial nature of the COVID-19 pandemic and the mitigation efforts, to have a plan with 87% acceptance rate, I will take that every day of the week, basically. So that's good news.
All right. Very good. Any discussion from the board or questions? And we had the, we had the
Motion.
Yes. I'll ask myself there. Okay. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are approved. And then also in the packet was a health and safety executive summary of written plans, and I would look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Missy. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And that concludes our agenda for this morning. We'll have our school board extended work session day, which we cleverly call Retreat for Monday, the 19th, and starting at 8:15 after our regular school board meeting, which will start that day at 7:00 a.m. So with that, motion to adjourn, please. So moved. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you.